Welcome to the City of North Plains City Council Radio Recession Meeting. I just feel like I'm gonna beat that. Monday, May 2nd, 2022 at 7:03 PM. Please stand for the legislative session.
The Act of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Page?
Here.
Counselor Kendall?
Here.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Payton? Here. Counselor Sheldon?
President.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Mayor Lenahan? Here. Thank you, Lori. Item number five is our consent agenda. We have several items underneath the agenda, the consent agenda, resolution number 2181, appointing Valerie Webb to the Budget Committee. Resolution 2183, designating the intersection of Commercial Street and Main Street a four-way stop. Five C proclamation, the 53rd Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week. D is the approval of tonight's agenda and then the approval of the April 18th City Council minutes. Laughed and digested there. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes that Lori needs to be aware of? Are there any other comments or concerns about the rest of the consent agenda? And hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have a first by Counselor Page, second by Counselor Payton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. Thank you. Item number six is public comment. We have two people here that wish to speak. First one, Glenn Warren. He wants to speak about the police. Glenn, would you like to come up to the podium?
The podium?
Lori, do you need him to just... What's his name? His name and address for the record?
Okay, Glenn Warren, 1045 Northwest 311, North Plains. Since I was at the meeting with the chief, I talked to some of the citizens and I believe that I could recommend to the council, instead of the 24-hour, seven days, is what people I hear, they would just like to have more coverage. Maybe not 24/7 because that might be, at this time, be a lot more money that that you guys can afford because of the city's budget and what our tax base would go up to. It's just the amount of crime that we do have and more presence of police might deter the people that come out here to steal stuff. That's all I wanted to say is, I talked to additional people and that's what they were really saying. They said, wow, 24/7, that's a lot of money. So, that's all my thoughts.
Well, thank you. We had a work session prior to this meeting and I would imagine that we'll have a staff will be bringing back additional information. So, watch the agenda. And if you want to come and listen and be a part of the conversation, I would just watch the agenda, watch online and please join us when we do that.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Glenn. Good to see you. Joyce Meek Reynolds, she wants to speak about the Historical Society.
Good evening, folks. My name is Joyce Meek Reynolds. I live on Monmouth Road. I was born and raised here in North Plains on Moscow Avenue. I've been here 75 years and the city needs a lot to me and this time I'd like to show my appreciation and thanks for all your hard work. I know the dedication that's involved in trying to get the city going. So, as a fellow citizen or a citizen around the area, I appreciate the work you do. Why I'm here tonight is that the Historical Society of North Plains has been founded in 2009. We were made officially a nonprofit organization in 2011. We have done numerous events and contributed a lot to this community. And I've talked to Terry numerous times that what I'm concerned about and what the committee, the Historical Committee is concerned about is that we've never had to pay rent on this building that our parents actually built. And I know it doesn't seem like a lot of money to you folks, but we tried to hold our end of involvement upon it. Up until two years ago, we did many, many days voluntary work at the schools, teaching our children about the history of North Plains. And I was hoping that you'd bring it up in discussion tonight and make a vote, a real city vote, on whether we can use this building probably eight times a year without paying rent. We're hoping, like other cities have done in the past, that some day we'll get some real support and have a historical building because we are here in North Plains, the Grand Colder Mountain there, Dixie Mountain, Tunbridge, West Union. This area here is by far the richest area in artifacts and historical being from the Oregon Trail. This is where it came, was the Lema Valley. And we need a place to put it too, so I'm just putting it all out here. We're looking for some help from the city eventually down the road. We're building. And if you guys build the city, I'm gonna be dying on your tail. You have any questions?
Anyone have an answer for me?
I have a question.
Sure.
How long have you been paying rent? When did this start?
We never... It just started.
Is that required now?
It was, it had never been required for all the years, 2009.
Yes, sir.
I believe that the city people are trying to do their job. I don't believe that the new people in that office realize that we were nonprofit, that we were part of the city, a working part of the city. A valuable part of the city. And we're just asking for, to relinquish the rent here.
Okay. I'll call Phil into here. So, this is part of a discussion. This is not, no picking on the Historical Society. This was a part of a discussion and a decision back in 2019, the budget, to charge some sort of nominal fee or to at least cover utilities, interns, staff time. So, you know, some of the things of this building. So, you know, one of those, I think it's 15, it's kind of like a $15 meeting fee. Pretty nominal, but it helps cover some things. We have no deferred maintenance budget of this building. Basically, it all comes from the general fund. So, we're trying to at least spread some of those costs amongst users to help some of that. And I don't want to pick on any small organizations, things like that. Because I get accused of being Scrooge often enough. One of the things that Bill and I know, so we'll have a, we do have a fee schedule that the city adopts each year, each year. We're looking at some of these things for decades right now, so we'll have something to break the state council next month. One of the things that we're thinking about changing is creating a new enterprise fund. You know, we have our water fund, we have streets fund, some of the other special fund or enterprise funds, those that actually bring in revenue, and this would be one of those. I think it would show, it would give a better accounting of the costs of this building and basically it brings in nominal revenue. And again, that's not to pick on any, in any groups, but it's just, at the very least, we start sending aside some money for maintenance projects. Because right now, the upgrades that we're able to do this, thankfully, are some grant money. That's nice. But to Joyce's question, I think it's a, is it a $15 meeting fee? Is that correct?
It's, I believe that a payroll check, $90 for two months, back in 2019, and you just found the check that was in somebody's drawer and there you go, cash. That's how important it is. But I also have to commend you on why you're doing this. I know why they're doing this. But you've never had a chair for us. Your only cost, what I have to do for us to drive down, pick up the key, we put, we swept the floors, we do all that. And we were here for an hour and a half today, and this is what the building looked like when you came. There was 40, excuse me, 34 people here today. What is the fee schedule for that? Do any, do you know the costs? The actual cost? Because I heard it was $15, now it's $20 for $90?
I may have said, well, maybe it was $45.
It was a $90 check, that's all I know.
$90 check for two, for two meetings?
Two months.
Okay, so it was $45, yeah. I know the schedule in front of me. I know it was a decrease of $15 though.
Okay, so they have three meetings a month?
Yeah.
Three, so you have six meetings $90?
I'm sorry, no, they have one meeting a month.
So, one meeting for $45? Yeah, it was $45 for an hour and a half, which realistically, sure, our fees, our membership fees are only $10 a minute. And if you add that up over a year period, that's gonna be, what, $600? So, that's 60 members a year that's gonna be paying for this. It would be different if there was really some work involved in here for us, but it's not. And we really believe in our hearts and in our community, for all the 75 years I've been here, the Historical Society is the community. We are part of North Plains. And in our own way, we keep you guys going. Because if you don't have history in this town, you're not gonna have a town. You're gonna have nothing. And you gotta, you gotta live with the value of what this town was established for. I mean, that's all we here, you folks, is if you want that small town environment, that small town vision, the history of this town is unbelievable. That's why we're here. We just want to be able to come, like I said, six to eight times a year and we'll do our job. I just can't see where it would burn this city at all.
I think, you know, Joyce, I appreciate you coming in and I know we have had several conversations about this, but I'm really glad that now they have heard our conversations.
I know that these people haven't been here forever.
Right.
And what's your old member of the Historical Society, by the way?
Oh, boy, that's a good one. You got, you're dealing with a tough lady here, so watch out.
So, I think that if we've got time, I really would like to take this up maybe after, you know, like during the council conversation towards the end of the meeting. And then, you know, not during public comment, but I want you to think about it during the meeting and then I think we can have a conversation in a little bit about this.
It certainly would appreciate it and so would the members.
Sure.
They really would.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joyce. Alright, next on the agenda is the presentation from Commissioner Jerry Woolley.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselors, certainly a pleasure to be here. Jerry Woolley, County Commissioner for District 4. And just to give you a little geographic snapshot of what District 4 is, it's basically everything west of the Pointe East Pass. District 2 comes down on the north of Sunset Highway down to Jackson School Road out here, but everything from Jackson School this way is basically District 4. So, I touch six cities in District 4. That's Hillsborough, Pointe East, Forest Grove, Gaston, Banks, and North Plains. I say five and a half because I only have half of Hillsborough. But I also touch four counties, which is interesting. We've got Yan Hill, Telma, Plaza, and Columbia. And that relationship allows me to also be a part of the Council of Forest Trustlands, which is primarily chaired by David Yamamoto, who was with the Telma Commission, and also several other commissioners. So, I get a flavor of both the urban side of things and the rural side of things. And it's, it's very interesting and certainly very educational. So, with that, I just want to say, you know, congratulations and, and good job to Bill and Andy for their work on the economic opportunity analysis that has been completed. Thank you very much for taking the time this past week and, and updating me on that. We look forward to continuing to work with, certainly, the city and, and giving you some great opportunities. So, just to, again, try and be county-wide perspective for a moment. Just like the state has to do their redistricting, we as a county have to do that when the census comes back and we are out of whack in our numbers. So, we take, we take District 4 versus 1, 2, and 3. So, District 1 has about 140, this is from the 2020 census, about 147,000 people. District 2 has almost 160,000. So, we're outside of the 105% burial variation that we get. District 3, which is basically Tiger, Twolleton South, there are about 147,000. And District 4 here is about 146 and change, okay? So, the three districts are really close, but District 2 is out of whack, so we have to redraw those lines. We'll be doing that over the course of the next several months. We have hired Portland State University that has an expertise in doing that. We've given them some of the guidelines, criteria of not drawing lines through maybe communities that work together as a unit, such as Aloha. We certainly didn't want to divide up Aloha and some of the other communities around District 2, 3, and 4. And we want also to have them touch. So, we've given Portland State a pretty good list of criteria and they're gonna come back to us later in the late summer, probably early fall, with some options that we have. So, stay tuned with that. The best news I can say is, it is not political. It's not these and ours and everybody else. We're just talking about where do we, where do we draw the lines that best fits our community and their representation? Another interesting thing is, is we all know Highway 6, if we head out and we go to Telma, we're on Highway 6. Considerably less traffic than 26, but also it is in pretty poor maintenance shape. And so, one of the truck drivers that drives that on a regular basis has pulled together a committee. And that's been interesting because has gotten the attention of Commissioner Scar, who was on the Telma County Commission, as well as myself and a state representative. And he has gone out to ODOT and been able to get some funding and some attention to the safety aspects of Highway 6. You know, it's gonna take a lot of money, in which case ODOT does not have that. But at least if we can give some attention and get people to slow down and not pass where they shouldn't be passing and take it easy on that highway, it'll make it much safer for all of us. I much prefer going to the coast on Highway 6 than I do 26. So, I'm working on that as well. Something that has certainly been top of mind with your mayor and the mayors of Washington County has been the LIV tournament that is out of Tunbridge. For your information, LIV is actually Roman numerals for 54. I can tell you why that is. It's because if you play golf and you play 18 holes and you birdie every hole, your score is 54. So, how they came up with that, I don't know, but that's what it is. LIV stands for 54. But, so, the mayor has, Mayor Lenahan has certainly communicated to me and to others that this tournament is, is gonna have potentially some problems with protesters. It's a Saudi-backed golf tournament. And so, and it's in competition with the PGA. So, it's going to be a little bit of a controversy that is out here. It is July 1, 2, and 3. So, it is also on a holiday weekend, creates all kinds of issues. The Sheriff's Office representative that was here tonight earlier, Al Roque, is on that group with the mayor and I, as well as Washington County Visitors Association. And working together with this group, they've been very responsible and very responsive to our concerns and those kinds of things. The mayor sent the, the course is owned privately by a corporation in Texas, and the mayor represented the 11 mayors in Washington County.
Washington County mayors.
Yeah, Washington County mayors. They compiled a letter and that was sent off last week. And so, at least we're communicating to them that we have some concerns about this tournament and certainly what the Saudi-backed money represents. And so, we're on record for saying that. Thank you very much, Mayor, for taking the leadership on that. That's been very important. Something that's a lot more fun and a lot more local is our county fair. It's gonna go 10 days this year. So, it is July 21 to July 31. Again, it's free. What our focus has been in this year is, and we started this last year, but it was very, very difficult because we were still in the pandemic. But what our focus has been is trying to get 4H back up to where it was pre-pandemic. They lost about 60% of their membership. And so, this year, we're trying to focus on that. So, if you're interested in any particular kind of livestock, any particular kind of activity, agricultural activity, or not, if you like, the carnivore rides. Just, we're gonna be putting out that calendar of events, certainly for that 10 days, and we'd encourage you to come on out. It attracts well. We're 100,000 people, especially on a 10-day event, so it's very well-received, certainly in the county, and we look forward to doing that. Another item that is kind of top of mind with the County Commission is homelessness, how we're dealing with homelessness. I went out and toured. Forest Grove has two homeless camps. One is on B Street and the other is on Highway 47. The Highway 47 camp is, is on both Washington County land and City of Forest Grove land. And working with those people that live in those camps to encourage and incentivize keeping their camps clean, providing porta-potties so their sanitation issues, dumpsters and those kinds of things. We all have money to do that from the initiative that was passed a little over, well, it's almost two years ago now, for the shelter and housing funding, as well as some of the federal ARCA money. So, we have funds to do those things. We're trying to keep those camps cleaned up and trying to, of course, encourage those campers, those folks that live there, that there's alternative housing that we can provide for them if they need some, if they need some mental health, if they need some addiction issues, we've got that available to them as well. So, trying to reach out and maintain those. So, that's a continuing conversation that we have. If you want to hear more about that, a week from tomorrow on our County Commission, we are getting an update on that. You can queue in on Zoom, of course. And you know, talking about Forest Grove or about North Plains Economic Opportunity Analysis, Forest Grove has a project called, it's a Green Data Center, Project Merryweather. It is a data center that is going to be located on about 52 acres in, in Forest Grove. And it's, it's gonna be a pretty cool project over a period of several years. It'll probably amp up to about 110 jobs, well-paid jobs. And there's gonna be a pretty significant investment. So, why do I mention that here in North Plains? It's because you have exactly the same opportunities when you move ahead on your EOA and on some certain stationary planning that the mayor and Andy are leading with Bill to do that and to position North Plains to be able to do that. So, I really am encouraging that and just want to say, let's push ahead as quickly as we possibly can because I think some of those opportunities are still out there and will continue to be out there. So, great opportunity for North Plains. Last item is rural broadband. You know, again, when I touch all those four counties, we have an organization called Columbia Pacific. It's the economic development arm of Western Washington County and those counties. And we started initially a survey, it wasn't a survey, we hired consultants to evaluate the the opportunity for rural broadband enhancement from, for Western Washington County. We concluded that now. We have all that information. We are now moving into an environment where we're going to say, who's some of our partners that could be helping us to do that? We are working with the City of Hillsborough, because as you know, they have their own broadband service that they provide. They also have, because you're in Hillsborough School District, you're within what they call the ring. So, we're working, we're starting to work with the City of Hillsborough now on how we can take our first baby step and come into North Plains and enhance broadband for all the residents in North Plains. And then, our next step will be towards Banks. And so, it's going to be North Plains, Banks, property into Forest Grove, and loop in Gaston. That's a big ask. We're gonna need some federal money to do that, but we know that we need to be shovel-ready when that money becomes available. We're working with our legislators to make sure they know this. And so, stay tuned with that. Again, really, really looking forward to getting this second step in the rural broadband aspect. Because we all know, we need better broadband just about everywhere we go. And lastly, get your ballots. Don't forget to vote. You've got some important stuff going on there. So, yeah, take care of that. And the sooner you vote, by the way, the sooner that you'll be off the list of harassment. So, I'm happy to take any questions, comments that you may have.
The, the Columbia group is called, that's COPEC, correct? I just wanted to make sure that that was listed.
Yeah, and there's another group. We do COPEC meetings in the morning. We do Northwest Act meetings in the afternoon. And the Northwest Act is a transportation farm. So, the tri-county area has their own act. We have an act that works out here. So, we work with ODOT and the other counties to prioritize projects like Highway 6 or some other improvements on 26. And then, of course, moving on down into Seaside, NASCAR. All of the, of course, all of these counties have their own transportation issues, but at least that's, we are the spokesperson for that particular reach.
Jerry, are you getting these, what you call the fair or the farm stuff back? How are you implementing that? Are you reaching out to all the egg segment or is that the same amount of building that they had before?
Well, the 4H has a new director. And so, he's, of course, got some new enthusiasm and new focus on how he's gonna do that. We are prioritizing some things at the fair, which will then hopefully enhance the kids to be more engaged in that. I was out a couple of weeks ago to a pig weigh-in. And it's, if you can get by the screaming of the pigs, it's pretty hilarious. But I don't want to be insensitive about that. But, so, we had, we had a lot of, a lot of attention to that. And we've got, the next weigh-in is in a couple of weeks. It's for, I think it's for beef. But I can't remember what it is, but yeah.
Okay.
But yeah, we're really trying to focus on that. And yeah, enhance the ability to get those kids back re-engage.
Thank you.
We good?
Counselor Martinez, did you have any questions for Commissioner Woolley?
No, but thank you so much for coming and preventing to us.
Thank you for the update. Good information and good luck with the, the race. I think you're, you're on it on the ballot just solo this year.
I think I'm unopposed, so I got a good shot.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah.
My ballot's in, so I'm glad. My phone's gonna be nice and quiet for the next few weeks.
Well, and thank you for that. And I will be back. I'm committed to doing this once a quarter. You can always reach out to me and see Megan's name right there. That's my assistant. So, she's So she's listening to everything I say. And so, um, if you really do have any concerns, questions, whatever the case is, reach out to Megan and I will be glad to come back in time.
Thank you, Commissioner World. Appreciate it. All right. Next up on our agenda is, uh, the second reading of ordinance number four seventy-eight, amending the transportation utility fee. Sorry, just getting this split up here. All right. So, um, do we do, does anyone have any additional questions or comments that we already been through this? So.
I'll just, I was at a training once we got a chance to admit the staff report, so it's going to be the first reading still. I apologize. Substitute second.
Second reading. Thank you.
I will disconnect. The second reading of ordinance four seven eight by ten.
All right.
So then.
We have a first, um, Council Page, second by Council Kendall. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed say nay. Hearing none. Motion carries. Um, ordinance number four seventy-eight is an ordinance amending section fifty-four dot oh four of the North Plains Unitas Code regarding the weight structure of the transportation utility fee. Um, now we need, um, a motion to approve.
Move to approve ordinance number four seventy-eight.
I'll second it.
The motion on the table by Council Kendall, seconded by Council Sheldon. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed say nay. Hearing none. Motion carried. Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda is, um, nine A, the resolution number two one eight two. This is updating the transportation utility fee analysis and establishing the tough fees. Andy.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Um, actually, my absence last week filled the staff report for this, but the long and short of it is we had the work session with the consultant back in February. Yeah. I thought you were using, um, with, with SCS. They did the SDCs, um, and the transportation utility fee charge as well. So, um, a, at that time, we discussed a couple of options really to bring that fee more in line with, um, a lot of our maintenance, uh, charges in the city. And just to be clear, because I know that some residents weren't so, weren't so sure. They thought the, the fuel tax, um, the recent fuel tax was going to maintenance. That's what the list of projects is. That, that, that fuel tax funds, the transportation bond funds new projects like, um, you know, pedestrian path, uh, the sidewalks open in at the intersection that go up to the railroad tracks, sidewalks around Jessup. It's a boardwalk thing, uh, over near the Veterans Park. Things that in June, when we hear, or in July, when we hear three J, a lot of C I P projects, they're coming from that transportation. So a lot of that's reconstruction. The only one that isn't is the transportation bond helps provide some funds for this kind of street overlay project. At the top has been there a more street maintenance, um, street lights, operation maintenance. The, the, the city, uh, takes on the over there for street lights, um, sidewalk repairs and things like that. Like we talked about before, uh, it hasn't been revised since twenty-eleven. So it's, it's been, uh, eleven years in that time. So SCS, uh, did some analysis, um, about where this, where this be could be. We also had a five dollar, um, fee. We just set it there in the budget, uh, for that account. Uh, trying to breathe that more in line, something that we've missed over the last, uh, ten years. So that that's in the budget, that five dollar amount, uh, per month. But some of the things that Bill, uh, talked about, I'll, I'll see by time here in a couple of minutes is what we're wanting to do with this report is simplify the rate design process and then having a rate, uh, a rate charge that, um, not only, uh, well, we're making up for lost time that we, we actually have a maintenance account. Um, right now in our street fund, it's just, uh, many gas taxes that we get from the county and the state that help pay for that street fund. You know, anything else that's local, that's the transportation line. Well, that's equipment, um, that's materials and that's personnel, uh, to, can't really count a lot of personnel for that fund just based on some shared gas taxes of the county and the state. So the top is a, a nice revenue source for maintenance. And also in any lean years, we could have transportation bond payments to get help supplement that too. So, uh, we're kind of making up for lost time here. As we put in the, um, I think it's here, this, this staff report. We got the, uh, five dollars, which is the recommendation from the staff and consultant, something that we've discussed in February. We're still less than half with the, with the region charges for that. Um, I know in Hillsborough, the water bill has a back dollar to let's, uh, tough charge on it. Um, and, you know, you could be, you could do a lot more with that. So, um, I'll, I'll let Bill kind of take over if there's things from the staff report that you put in there that you could work pointing out. But really, this is just a cap of the discussion that had in February.
Thank you, Andy. Um, I, Council, I don't have a ton to add to that. What I will say is, um, from an administrative standpoint, the, the recommended changes to the methodology, setting the rate aside. The recommended changes to that greatly simplify the city's effort in charging and collecting the top. Um, this was one of the big surprises in going through this, but we had dozens and dozens of different tough rates because they were set based on individual, at each individual structure. I can't remember if it was like forty-five different rates in our accounting system that we were charging every month. This simplifies it down to less than ten and everybody kind of is charged in fair comparable way. Um, as opposed to previously, we have rates that were set years ago, um, that were very differently structured than some rates for Zuber loans. It was just a mess basically unfortunately. And this simplifies it and just makes it far more manageable. The other thing is that as, as we plan for having more employers, um, moved to North Plains over time, the tough rate change, um, if adopted would let, would, would have us charge the tough based on how big the employer's building is in square feet and not based on wildly fluctuating employment figures. The way the tough rate works now, we're supposed to actually go out and ask the employer every year, how many people do you have working in your facility? And we're supposed to update that rate. The tough rate methodology change before you hear just lets us consistently charge based on the size of their building. And if they're maxed out full employment or they go through a recession, we don't have to deal with that and they don't have to update reporting to us. So that's just a nice additional simplification as well for management purposes.
Is it waiting for them to, uh, uh, ask if we're to be audited, say, we have a recession and we have four employees and we're trying to pretend? Is it waiting for them to, uh, have that displayed?
Council Page, not really. And to be honest, um, staff in past years had not followed up on the requirement to do that basically. Uh, rates have just, largely because rates have been charged, been changed in so long, nobody really complained about the rate. So, um, this, a lot, this sets the stage for things being a lot simpler in the future if there are fluctuations in the economy.
So does it mean no appeal option?
I'm sorry?
So does it mean no appeal option?
Well, it's based on effectively, it's, I mean, unless they have an argument over what the, what the size of their building is, that would be the basis for any appeal, not any fluctuation in employment.
So would you permit, permit just to decide on the, on the structure?
Size of the structure, that's correct. And the nice thing is we have that information on file with the, the development application and that information. So we all agree on the, the terms of charging.
There's two options here, option A and option B. Um, will that, uh, will that, that this recommended or the sample motion or, you know, like a motion on this or?
I would, well, the, yeah, the, the recommendation of the report would be option B. That would be five dollars one. That would be indexed with inflation here. I think probably what's in the, with the graph there was when they did the original analysis. Just a couple different, a couple different options.
And the, just to be clear, the, the funds collected from the top actually, I mean, it does, it, it goes to what it says it goes to. Like the maintaining the streets and that sort of thing.
It's restricted.
Yeah, it's, it's restricted. Yeah. Council Martinez, do you have any questions or comments? Anyone else here have a comment or question for Bill? All right. And we have a sample motion in your packet. Any additional thoughts? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to a resolution two one eight two, update the city of North Plains transportation utility fee methodology.
I'll second it.
We have a first by Council Sheldon, seconded by Council Smith. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed say nay. Hearing none. Motion carry. Thank you, Bill. Um, all right. Uh, item number ten, business eleven, unfinished business. And we're going to just jump right into city manager report. Come in.
Well, I, I don't have a lot to report based on, I'm going to fill that in on Friday. I did do an emergency management. Uh, class in Lincoln City last week. You're back to courses, which is good. And the good thing is the same instructors from Texas are going to be there next month. So I can do a two day follow-on, kind of knock those out, trying to do that. Um, to get our, um, getting that emergency management officials. Still looking for a public works director. Uh, I've been reaching out through their networks. I've talked to some different folks, different engineers, uh, city managers. I've talked to the city manager of Sandy today. They worked with this last year. Um, it's just a tough time. But anyway, it's back in the street till midday. You know, Beaverton at the same time closes for a public works director. So I'm going to talk to city manager on Wednesday about be sharing in some information, uh, on my candidates. And the thing is with the bigger agency, it takes them like two months longer and higher than it would have us. So, um, we're, we're able to build positions, but, 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 but their search is still on there. So anyway, we'll do it continuously there. Um, I don't have a lot else, a lot more to add. I'll definitely cede my time to some of the discussions that, that we wanted to have happen there. But I do want to say, um, thank you, Bill, for a lot of the analysis and the work that's done, some of the figures you've seen today. And also thank you, Lori, and happy city clerk appreciation. We don't appreciate you enough. You do a lot of behind the scenes stuff, so thank you.
I wouldn't even know if they'd send me it. Thank you. All right. Um, so yeah, I, I think that, um, well, council reports before we start talking about the North Plains Historical Society. Anybody have anything to report, questions?
One question to end.
Sure.
Our commercial junkyard. How are we proceeding on that so far?
Commercial junkyard. Is that the one on Commercial Street?
Yes.
Had a discussion today with the property builder. So she's given them the, the thirty day notice. They accepted it and I told her, well, so we should, we should save them gone by the end of this month. She said, yes. So she was working through a lot of issues with the state for back rent payments that she'd never been paid. And I think she wanted that to go through because she needed this signature on that to get those payments. Sort of a, it could have been some sort of, yeah, some sticky situations there. Anyway, I think that's settled. So she let me know that she's working through those issues right now. And that's the latest information that I have.
Notice when I came home tonight that the lot looked lighter, fewer cars. Yeah.
Just if I add a comment, you know, a few other situations in the county where people tried to evict people, you know, that own the property and the attorney fee has been run ten to twenty thousand dollars. From their own money, just to get them off of it, off their own property.
Yeah.
Probably the he, so I, when she come across that same thing.
She has. Yeah, I put her in touch with the attorney a couple of months ago. I just said to the very least, have him explain the process. She had to go through and write the letter first certified mail.
That'll be a blessing, let me tell you.
Is there a stopgap measure the next time we can do to stop something like that? Well, it's, yeah, right. It's a vetting process.
It's private property. Yeah, I mean. Just, I, I think when they come in for a business license application, they just be able be a little, it'll be a little more thorough depending on what the use is. You know, it's a, it's an exact use. It's tough. It's a change of use. There's more anyway there. I, for that particular property, I think she, she's actually not going to go do that again. So, no. I don't think we'll run into the same issue here, but for other ones, yeah, it's a little, it's a little tough.
Council Smith, do you have anything else?
Oh, I do. Council reports?
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Last Monday I attended the stakeholders for the library. I'm trying to put program like we have our certain city and what their direction is going to be. They had a pretty good amount of people show up. So be interesting how that ends up with all the information she's got. And I did go to the open house at Burn Hill. It seemed pretty, it was really busy. And I did count houses. It's not five. It looks like around a dozen are sold already, which is amazing since they had started selling them so. Like, I think it's moving fast right to audible, so. You know, they're now in the Sunday and Thursday on Saturday. And, um, it's, it doesn't happen very soon. So I was going to buy them this and, yeah. Well, the cheapest one was five seventy-five. That's sixteen square feet. I was going to buy a townhouse, but I'm amazed.
Yeah. Anything else?
That's true.
Thank you. Any other council reports? Council Martinez? No. Okay. Um, two, two things. I know that at the upcoming chamber meeting, uh, May tenth, um, you're, um, hosting, um, Suzanne Lumber, you know, Melissa Bush?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. And then, and, um, so they're running for, um, representative position, um, thirty-one. And is there anyone else?
District sixteen.
Oh, sixteen, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Thirty-one. Um, so with the redistricting, um, there, you know, we, we have, we're going to have to be a representative. And I think it's important to get to know these people. So if you are in town, you can attend the May tenth, uh, chamber meeting. Um, it's at the senior center at noon. Strugglingly encourage you to go and have a listen if you're interested. Um, and then now let's talk about the North Plains Historical Society. Um, I know you've had several conversations with the man you're on the, on the society.
It's such a laid back group and it's, they really enjoy this. They have no place to go. It's such a laid back group and it's they really enjoy this, they have no place to go. And the fees are only ten dollars per person, three hundred, she said six hundred, I thought it was around three hundred. And some people don't always pay their dues. And there's a lot of information, you can't leave the valuable information that those people talk about today. Just all that stuff, like you said, the Oregon Trail and we got to here, here in Washington County. Bear Board, you know. I think it'd be a big plus to the way that people and people. They did meetings a month and then they have a picnic out on Mountaindale, they support that. Other than they had the gavel shook a change from that Mr. Jackson. And he died, they did really nice on that, so. Son's here today, it was just interesting talking to that people, you know, don't get to hear that. You know, and then Jackson Cemetery, they're kind of, you know, working towards that too.
Well, I know it takes time to even maintain and and you know, even Melvin Van Donglen has been doing it for years and. Didn't he just turn ninety-one or something?
Yeah, I haven't seen you around much, so I'm kind of concerned about it, so there's a real historian there that would have been for him, he wouldn't have what we have now today.
Right, right.
Yeah, he's a real asset to this community.
And I and I know as Joyce mentioned, they have so many artifacts and you know. I remember speaking to Melvin one time at great length about it, he said. Please find us a place where we can house our artifacts, like they just, there's just, there's not a storefront, there's not a, you know. It'd be really awesome to have a North Plains museum, right? A place to put all of all of these artifacts and. I know that there's just a real need and and they don't have revenue other than we really just. And then if someone requests them or something like that.
Roll up their names, I'm not saying they will, I tell you, you can't count on that.
Well, I don't know what we can about the museum, that's that's something. But as far as the five one three C is next for them, for the other ones that she uses places. Maybe just allocate some new slots and have them. Every year, get a request for X amount of meeting slots for that could be considered a system. So I'm just giving one five one three C or one charity.
Only comment I'll make, it's got a North Plains, you know, logo on it, and just said historical society.
Oh yeah, but we also have a, I don't know, there's probably others.
I don't know, but many other, does anybody know how many other? Yeah, we have nonprofits.
We have a couple more and I know church isn't, one church did do it before, but they have. Yeah, we would just, you know, when it comes to waiting, you know, you have to be clear. Because if one doesn't wait, everybody will, that's just the slippery slope, they were.
Right, so it might be some kind of criteria. Yeah, I thought it was fifteen dollars a meeting and they had eight meetings, I will donate to that charity. But I can get a good price of houses with costs, I heard thirty-five dollars for two months.
Is it forty-five or is it fifteen?
Whatever, you have the fee schedule, because I think it was fifteen for a certain amount of time, that's why I turned it forty-five, I can't remember. It's on my council on issue. So. We plan to come to you before July first with. Some new information and some research and some new rental agreement language that will help. Renting things out and being more clear on fees for Jesse Mays. The number of resolutions that are still binding over the years that. Determine who gets to rent it for what and how much of a deposit it's 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 kind of like a bowl of spaghetti. As to put it clearly, I guess, or as clearly as possible. But what I what I do want to read to you is the last binding resolution by this body on this very issue. It's resolution fifteen oh four, it was passed by city council in June twenty nine, two thousand nine, actually. And the specific language about who who council should allow the city manager to waive fees for. For nonprofits is basically this. Section four, item A, what organizations can get a fee waiver from from city manager? The organization using or renting the hall is a tax exempt nonprofit corporation and the organization. Is providing a service for the benefit of the community, the use shall not be on a routine basis. This does not include a religious organization offering religious services. There are some other conditions that don't apply to the North Plains Historical Society, but the bottom line is that. Resolutions over the years and then this one was updated with a different deposit structure by meeting size. It's not really clear and it's not clear for staff when different types of organizations come in. So I guess what I want to say is. I'm gonna come back to you all with Andy about proposed updated fees for residents and non-residents for larger events. And I think that there's opportunity to be clear about perhaps legacy organizations and giving them a very different but. In you know, clear rate or exemption or conditions of exemption. Because what's also true is how much we charge for the use of this for weddings and receptions and bigger events with or without alcohol. We're a gigantic discount, even for non-residents wanting to come here and use the facility. There's room to raise that non-resident rate for for different events in a way that more is that more than pays for free use by maybe a legacy organization. So we're gonna come back to you with more information about new proposed rates and new contract language for the facility. That will just kind of maybe help. With the issue, if that makes sense.
Or we could do something that we have them like. At the end, we could give a rebate or something, you know, we could do something like, we could do like the same, we could use your. They're on and see give. A grant back to these.
Council page, yeah, I mean, definitely, definitely options, but you know, if what we have, we do have, all I want to say is we do have room. Fees for rentals by non-residents for events and. And like Andy said, we're we're looking at making, putting the operations of Jesse Mays its own enterprise fund. And then as I visit with other cities and how they manage kind of older heritage facilities like this. We want to kind of budget for repairing reserve in that fund and some other things so that we know that our rates are covered. So but we'll come back to you with with more.
You know, we're so limited in the space that we do have for our. Our groups, you know, and I did talk to Joyce about possibly using the seniors even. And she said sometimes they can have as many as, you know, forty people and. It might not be, it's not a good use of space, I mean, it's crowded, super crowded at senior center, right? And so really, this is the the only space large enough to be able to, you know, give them a space and it's. You know, they can bring a wheelchair in here, ADA and that sort of thing, so. I don't know, just curious.
I'm in favor of moving forward and waiving it right now, no waiting. We can iron out all these other details for other groups, but this is a public facility, it's owned by the public. And as far as I'm concerned, they're as public as they can be, yeah, they're not a public entity, but. I just think it's getting just carried away with a group like that, they don't have a budget. Yeah, I frankly, I. You know, there should be some discretion and certainly, I'm assuming most of their meeting hours are during the week, probably when the demand is low or nonexistent. From other renters and other opportunity and the opportunity cost of losing rentals, but our focus shouldn't be on turning this thing into a revenue. It should be to recover our costs, to cover the wear and tear and the upkeep on the building, I don't have any problem with that, but as far as the. As far as the historical society goes, I all for waiting.
I agree.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
I know it's like delayed a little bit, no, but I have a hard time, you know, seeing the have. North Plains Historical Society, what are, you know, towns made of and then charging them. To use, it just doesn't, just for their monthly meeting, just doesn't sit very well when they're nonprofit, but. Resident versus non-resident, totally in agreement with, you know, changes that could be done there, but as far as historical society. I just, it kind of seems, I don't know, silly to charge them for. Our history.
The last thing I'll say, it's such a good message. I mean, it's. It has benefits. Makes you feel like you want it, otherwise, okay, they don't want us here. In the, we're doing the. Being scheduled that we exempt. The North Plains Historical Society and then fees.
Are we gonna do just the society itself or are we gonna redo that so it's so it says the more plain?
I think we just need to exempt the Historical Society in conjunction with the changes. To sort that out for now, if they go away, they go away. It's ten years ago.
Something that's gonna be more, obviously, it'd be easier for people to figure out, right, since in just the society. This, what other ones I look up to as they want to.
Point the border, I believe, we do have a motion on the table.
My motion was to exempt the North Plains Historical Society for charging them using this hall.
Is there a second? Cam, Cameron, all right, so we have a first and then we have a second discussion.
I would consider the more robust come come through here besides just do a piece in the, who gets it, who doesn't. So. That last one we said, the last one you read in two thousand nine, sound like it included. The nonprofit for here. Does anybody see this, it should have submitted.
The distinction may have been a one-off nonprofit, not a recurring, but I don't recall. Yeah, the resolution actually states that recurring meetings for nonprofits should should be charged. Yeah, should be charged. So, yeah, so so let's say the Historical Society said, we're gonna have a big community quilting event and we can, we'd like to use. Jesse Mays and it was like a one-time thing, by the resolution, they wouldn't pay a thing. But having a monthly meeting, the resolution says they should do it. So that's why I mean, it's like a bowl of spaghetti and and we'd like to come back and recommend some shit.
Yeah, for a patch, I would also agree to do that, but we should revisit it to make this more more robust. So is that just one specified?
Yeah, well, at the very least, amongst the other resolutions out there, there is the city manager does a discretion to what he needs. So that's already on the books, that's what we can do, without even doing the motion.
Oh.
Yeah.
You can waive it on your own.
I can, I can, I can waive it.
We can ensure you'll waive it, but having that backstop from the city council.
I mean, personally, I'd rather do a motion too, because it.
Well, hey, yes, do the minutes.
We're talking about, right.
How many what groups?
Uses that.
We're talking about one, the motion is one.
When you're talking other groups.
Historical society, nobody else.
Yeah, doesn't make any difference on any other groups, I'm just signaling out, we want to waive the fee.
On this one only.
On this one only.
One of those have equal weight as this one, or be part of the maybe.
It's a community event.
Yeah. I'd say this one is the most direct.
Some of the longest surviving residents of this community are on that historical society.
Right.
Okay, I'm gonna call the question.
So we have a motion on the table, we have a second, still in discussion. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of Council Kendall's motion, please say aye. Any opposition, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Bill, you are still bringing back this other, so we'll look at that in a couple of. All right, um. Any changes to any of the monthly meetings, people need to make any adjustments? All right.
I got a hopscare I'm gonna go to, I'd like to on the eleven, but if you would give me the permission to. Talk to Mr. Mr. King and get an update of what happened at the meeting and I can bring it back in that respect. I don't, I don't need anybody else to just take my place and I took Cameron's place, that's okay, but. But I'll make sure that the whatever happened at meeting gets back here, that that's okay, I'll talk to Stuart. That's okay. And then the hopscare about three years.
Okay, all right, any other? Reports? All right, hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the city council meeting at eight ten, thank you folks.